As you can see there, under the executive session announcements, there was an executive session held on Thursday, May the 28th to discuss personnel. And so now we're going to move on to the public comment section. So this is for public comment on agenda items. So if anybody would care to make any comments at this time on any items that are on the agenda for this evening. We'll take any questions. I don't see anything so far in the Q and A bin. I don't see anything in the chat. Oh, wait a moment to see if there's anything on there. I think there was nine folks, I think, in the participant section. I don't see anything at the moment. Lori, did you get a question?
She had sent a question earlier today about the resolution from the last agenda. Her question was, why couldn't we combine Resolution One and Resolution Two because they both had a couple of different little things?
Well, we'll be visiting that tonight, I think. That has to do with the funding for, or that has to do with the charter school. So we'll be talking about that resolution tonight. I do believe, I think, this is an agenda item later on. So that'll be, that'll be part of what we're going on, part of what we're going on later on tonight. Dr. Sher, would you like to correct me if I answered that incorrectly?
No, Mr. Lingren. Basically, I think that, you know, the board's conversation, we took, we took the two resolutions and, and basically, you know, combined them to the one. So we did take both resolutions into account, informing the resolution for the board that will be voted on tonight. And of course, as always, that can be discussed.
Right. Okay. All right. So the next question is from someone else saying they have a question, but it's not for an agenda item. So we'll ask you then to hold that question for the end. We have another public, public question, public comment section at the end of the board meeting. So that would be the more appropriate time for that public comment. So if you wouldn't mind holding that to the end of the meeting, will it be another public comment section? That's all right. We'll move on then. Dr. Sher, presentations, recognition, and awards.
Yes. Moving on to student board representative recognition. The board and the administration would like to recognize Ms. Brenna Mayberry for two years of outstanding service as our student board rep. And I'd just like to take a minute to, to talk about Brianna, if I may. In addition, she is a member of the National Honor Society, where she has served as vice president for the past two years. She's a four-year member of the Service Club, Spark the Wave, and has been president for the last two years. Brianna also has been the boys' basketball manager for her four years in high school and played girls tennis this past fall. Brianna will be continuing her education next fall at McDaniel College in Maryland, where she will be majoring in no other than political science. Congratulations. Thank you for serving. And feel free to address the board and the community.
I, sorry, I apologize for my setup. I'm still in my car. I did just pick up my diploma and I almost home. So that's where I am right now. I would say thank you so much to the board for this opportunity. I have loved serving as a board rep. I love talking to the kids, you know, getting to go to the elementary schools and talk to the first and second graders about how they want to pool. It's just, it was always so fun and I've always loved it. So I would say thank you. And Madison is going to serve the board very well. She was an awesome partner to work with this year and she's going to do great things for this district. So thank you to Madison and thank you to the board.
Well, it's certainly our pleasure. This has been, you know, we haven't had the chance to see you and talk to you. It's been our, it's been a disappointment that we haven't been able to see you at the board meetings for these past several months. And it's been very, one of the things that's been very tough about this whole thing. So we're sorry about that. So what I'd like to do, it's been a little bit unusual. Are there any board members that would like to say anything to Brenna at this time? I'd like to offer that out to anybody that would like to say anything. And as I usually do, and, you know, to make things go a little bit more quickly, I'll just go backwards through the, through the group and just start with Mr. Hutt. Would you care to say anything in particular? I'll do this fairly quickly.
Thank you for your time here and as a poli sci major myself, best of luck.
Thank you.
Very good. Dr. Nipper?
Good luck in your endeavors and I hope you enjoy your, your, have a good and happy future ahead of you. Thanks for your service.
This is McIntyre.
Yep. Thank you for your service Brenna. And I'm sorry that this year was so crazy and appreciate the grace with which you have finished so strongly and appreciate the way that you served in this position. It serves as an excellent example for everybody coming up behind you in that regard and best wishes, best wishes at college.
Thank you.
Mr. Lappack?
Congratulations Brenna and thank you so much for all you've done. You're a fantastic person and have fun at college, enjoy yourself.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, congratulations. Don't have too much fun at college though. But no, I always appreciated that insight you brought to the board. I thought you did a great job. So thank you and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Custer?
Brenna, I want to wish you the best of luck in school. Have a blast. Enjoy every minute of it. I have one kid standing right off to the side here who just disappeared, who is sort of a little melancholy over the fact that his, his school days are over. So have a wonderful time, study hard. Thank you so much for just, just being so awesome at what you did. So, and I hope we see your face around, you know, breaks, anything like that. Yes, if you ever need anything, you know where to, where to find me. So best of luck.
Thank you.
Mrs. Wim?
Brenna, congratulations. You were such an inspiration and you have such a bright future ahead of you. You're closing one chapter and look out world, it's coming, she's coming, she's coming. And so I wish you the very, very best and, you know, come back, visit us, keep in touch and best of luck, hon.
Thank you.
Mr. Leach?
Congratulations, of course, but I'm going to keep this light. College, nothing good happens after 2:00 AM. Remember that. Nothing good.
Okay.
Congrats.
Brenna, I'm old fashioned. He's wrong. Nothing good happens after 11:00.
Bob, that's just when the parties are getting started. Come on. You gotta go out, you gotta start at 11:00.
I raised three daughters. Brenna, our families are tied very closely, as you know. Your father and I worked with young Marines back, as you know, long before you were born and watched you grow up and I wish you very, very, all the best. You've been terrific in your role and it's been nothing but a pleasure to have you with us and, you know, to see the, the joy and how well you did your job and, you know, working with Ms. Palma, who's also been terrific in the job. So I hope that you go, you know, to McDaniel and just knock their doors off, just, just really, really have a great time, but not after 11:00. And, and make the most of it and have a terrific, terrific time. Never forget where you came from and make us all proud. Take care.
I hope so. Thank you so much.
All right. Very good. Appreciate it. I'm sorry, Dr. Sher, go ahead, please.
Yep, thank you. Just waiting for the screen to change. At this time, the board and administration would have recognized our following comrades, if you will, to a happy retirement. We have a group of six and for the record, I'd like to read their bios. Not everybody is with us tonight, but Dr. Lisa Jones, Ms. Deborah Arnosky, Ms. Gloria Hicks, Mr. Todd Kelly, Ms. Diane Sellers, and Ms. Margaret, Ms. Margaret Worley will all be retiring from the school district this year. I'd like to first start with a bio on Debbie Arnosky. Debbie has held many positions since she started at Pottsgrove. She has been a duty aide, a reading aide, pre-first instructional assistant, and most recently, a special education instructional assistant at the middle school. There, she was involved in many different programs, including the SNAP team, the SWBIS team, and of course, the tutoring program. Debbie can also be seen working as a ticket taker in many sporting events, both at the high school and middle school. Debbie and her husband are moving to Delaware and they plan to restore a VW bus and they look forward to visits from their family and friends. So we want to congratulate Debbie Arnosky and all of our gifts for retirement were sent out to all of our retirees. So they should be in their possession as we speak about them tonight. Gloria Hicks, Gloria has worked at the middle school as a receptionist and guidance secretary for 17 years. She said the best part of her job was getting to know all the families that she's met over the years. If she sees a former student in the store or someone outside of school, they always stop and ask how she's doing. She feels that there has been a bond because they knew they could always come to her and she would help them with a problem. Gloria plans to spend more time with her family and grandchildren. She looks forward to traveling and going to the beach and may even get a part-time job for a few hours a week and do some volunteer work. So we want to congratulate Gloria. Dr. Jones, Lisa Jones, as our next retiree. Dr. Jones first came to the district as a teacher in our middle school after leaving to serve as an assistant principal at the Owen J. Roberts Middle School for several years. She returned as the principal of Ringy Rocks Elementary in 2013. Lisa loves working with the students, all students and all staff at Ringy Rocks Elementary. She and her husband are looking forward to spending more time with the three daughters and she is very excited to begin her new venture in a ministry role at her church. There, she will be serving as a group and woman's pastor. Congratulations, Lisa. And just, just to let everybody know at the end, I want to, I will open the mic for our retirees who are with us to, to say a few words if they choose. Todd Kelly is our next retiree. Ask any graduate of Pottsgrove High School what you think and the first person that's mentioned is Mr. Kelly and you will get a multitude of responses. Many remarks on how hard the work was with Mr. Kelly, but how wonderful he was as a teacher. They also marvel at the plays and the musical he directed through the years. His passion for drama is evident to all who have known him at the high school as a stage, onstage, and, and his stage also has been named in his honor. Others remarked that he was a hard teacher, but was always fair. The one thing everyone agrees when they talk about Mr. Kelly is that he made them not just a better student, but a better person. Some will say he does not even realize how much he has touched the lives of so many students and his fellow teachers. We wish him and his family all the best in his retirement. Congratulations, Todd. Diane Sellers, Diane has worked in the public school system for over 25 years. She joined the staff at what's Pottsgrove as a student assistant in 2008. During her time at Pottsgrove, she has helped many different students excel in the classroom. Her colleagues and friends described her as hardworking, dedicated person whose calm demeanor was an asset to the classroom. Diane will be missed by all students and her coworkers, but is looking forward to some relaxing time with her family during her retirement. Our last retiree is Meg Worley. Meg has been teaching math to high school, to high school students for over a 40-year span. She began teaching after graduating from Penn State and after taking some time off to raise her family. With her husband, former Pottsgrove math teacher Ralph, she returned to the classroom in 2000. She is very thankful for the opportunity to instruct and influence more than a generation of students, one of which is her current principal, Dr. Ziegler. Not going to say what type of student he is. That was not mentioned here in this, this write-up. While the decision to retire was a difficult one, Meg feels the time is right and is looking forward to spending some relaxing time with her family. So congratulations to all the retirees. We wish them all the best. And I would like to give the opportunity for the open mic at this time for any of the retirees who are with us to, to speak to the board.
Can I speak up? You got me? Okay.
You got you.
I, I just wanted to say that what I, it was a joy for me to teach at Pottsgrove for all those years. What I really loved about Pottsgrove was the sense of community that I experienced here. And no better example of that was when I was diagnosed over seven years ago with ALS. And I felt very fortunate because I got incredible support from the administration, from my colleagues, from my students, and I really got to see from the other side what Pottsgrove community really meant. And it meant a great deal to me and I thank the Pottsgrove community for that. And like I said, I had a wonderful career. I'm sorry it had to end, but these things happen. And I just want to tell you how much I relished the time I had at Pottsgrove.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Dr. Sher, it's Lisa Jones here. I just want to thank the board and everyone, the administration, and the Pottsgrove community. And Todd said it right. Pottsgrove really is a community. It's a family. And I've certainly experienced that to the hilt this past week as my staff and students have honored me in some special ways. And it's funny because today, when I told all of my students in our school-wide Zoom last day assembly, their faces dropped when I told them that I started teaching over 30, 30 years ago. They thought that in 1990, I think they thought that was like ancient history. So, but I just have loved my career in education. I have loved serving in Pottsgrove. It's a great community and I just wish you all the very, very best.
Thank you for your comments, Lisa. Okay. Would any of the board members like to comment regarding our retirees before we move on?
I would. First of all, this is a powerhouse of a retiree here. I just wish them all the very best. I thank them for all their contributions for over the years and their dedication to all of our students, to our community, and I wish you nothing but the best and go have some fun. Thank you.
I actually had Mr. Kelly and I wasn't always happy when I was doing the work, but he definitely did prepare you for what was coming down later. So I am thankful for him for that.
Sorry, I can't be on video, driving through the mountains of Pennsylvania, but yes, want to thank everybody for your dedication and the work and the difference you made in so many, so many students' lives over the years. What an incredible job from all of you. I look forward to hearing about the exit interviews that I'm sure have been done or will be done with the retirees. They are, I don't think we could have a better source of insight. So I look forward to it.
I just also wanted to say thank you to everybody. Couple of you I didn't know, but I have no doubt that no, Pottsgrove was your home away from home and of course, always sort of will be. So, and for Mr. Kelly, I have two here that, two kids here that have benefited a great deal from your teachings. Both of them had to and continue to have to write quite extensively for their majors. And it's just amazing to read what they write and to actually have them correct me sometimes when we're writing something. So hats off because you had a lot to do with that. So good luck to everybody. Enjoy yourselves and just have a, have a great time.
We have, we have tremendous fortune. We have very good, we're blessed in Pottsgrove with an amazing staff, an amazing faculty and a very long-serving staff and faculty. We don't have tremendous turnover like they have in some districts and have these folks, you know, people that I've known for a very long time here, who've been with us, with this district for so very long. And as they, you know, are moving on and retiring, it's bittersweet to see them, see them go. You're happy for them to be able to retire and, and to, you know, take well deserved and, you know, rest and move on to these other opportunities. I mean, I'm looking forward to it soon, one day myself. Not too soon, but soon enough. But it's sad. It's because it's, it's, you know, Pottsgrove won't be the same without them. Mr., all of you, Mr. Kelly, you're legendary and the theater won't be the same without you. English department won't be the same without you. Ms. Worley, it's the same thing. It's just not going to be the same place. And, you know, Ringy Rocks won't be the same place without you, Mrs. Jones. It's just, it's tough. Ms. Arnosky's been here forever and, and while we're happy for you, we're also very sad to see part of Pottsgrove change just that little bit. So bittersweet is the best word I can come up with for this, for this party. Happy for you and sad for us. And we wish you the very, very best and will, will not say goodbye, but we'll say till we see you again. And thank you.
Thank you, board, for those comments. We're going to move on at this time to 4.3, the annual safety presentation. Dr. Harney, are you ready to present?
Yes, sir, I am. Lori, if you'd mind, put up the PowerPoint for me. Thank you. So if you recall, last year, it was our first annual report. This is our second annual report. And if you go to the next screen, I left this, this piece in there just to remind everybody why we have this report and why we'll have it every year until the legislation changes. With the safety regulations that were put in place in 2018, they added quite a bit to school districts' calendars. And one of them is this report that we need to give to make sure that the board is up to date on all of the things that we do as a district to promote safety within the school district. I won't read all of those bullet points. As I said, they were there from last year as well, but they all still hold up. There were many things put in place by that legislation. And one of them was, on next screen, if you will, Lori, was the creation of the safety coordinator. And this piece was up there again last year too, but these are some of the roles of the safety coordinator that need to be fulfilled on an annual basis. So we will go to the next screen, please. So here we are talking about some of the continuation of the safety initiatives that were in play, that we continued for this year. We had intruder drills in all of our buildings in September. We partnered with all three of our police departments. And what that entailed were all of our students leaving the building and it was a, there was a script read by the principal. Basically, it was very similar to an alest drill minus the actual person and minus any gunfire or simulated gunfire. So the principal got on and said there was an intruder in the building and all the students had to react as such. They either had to hunker down in their rooms or they had to go out to the rally points. So we, they were all very successful. We were lucky this year. We had a good day of weather and everyone was able to get out to the rally points. If the students did decide to, and the teachers decided to hunker in their rooms, once it was over, they went to the rally points as well, just to get that experience of going to where the rally points were located. And I'm going to bring up the rally points a little bit later in this presentation when I talk about the reunification plan. But it went very well and we will continue to have those. The one addition, Dr. Sher and I decided last year, we're not going to announce the time. We had the time announced for the first time we did it, but we're going to be doing this again with a little less preparation or pre-warning to get a better feel for, for a real live activity. The next piece is the camera upgrade project that was completed. If you recall, we, we used two active grants to complete that project. We upgraded all the infrastructure of all of our cameras. Some of our buildings, when we started this, did not have the capability of keeping recordings for more than a couple of days. The quality wasn't what it needed to be. So those have all been upgraded and we were going to, we will continue on a periodic basis replace older cameras with some additional grant monies as they begin to go offline and cannot be repaired. This piece we have, have discussed in the past, again, it's the, the layers of safety that we use to keep our, our students as safe as possible in the virtual world that we're in, in a big way right now. Safe to say, still very active this year. We had 82 tips that came into the district this year. Of those, 55 were at the middle school, 25 were at the high school, and two at the elementary level. So the trend seemed to continue this year from last, that the middle school seems to be really the place where, where most of our tips are coming in. I think, once again, I think we do a fantastic job of following up on those tips and, and getting everyone the support that they need. And you really never know the, the ultimate impact it makes, but I know that, that it's, it's saved a lot of pain for a lot of people. So we're, we're happy that, that program was established. Can you go to the next screen, please? So these are some of the things that took place this year. We had our third year of the Pottsgrove District Safe Schools Partnership Committee. We had our full committee. We try to have two full committees a year. We had our full committee meeting in October. Then we had a safety, a security subcommittee meeting, excuse me, in February where the result, we reviewed the entire reunification plan and some of the suggestions that were, were given at that committee meeting were implemented. We were scheduled to have a health and wellness subcommittee meeting in April where we were going to review the district pays survey data. That will be rescheduled probably for the fall. And obviously, the full committee meeting unfortunately had to be canceled. Then we move into a description, a little bit of, I'm going to go to the second bullet point on the next page. Talk about the reunification plan as I alluded to on the previous screen. So that was completed with the help of the committee and we got them out to the schools and we were going to do tabletop drills in all the buildings this spring with the help of the county. in all the buildings this spring with the help of the county. But again, those were canceled, but those will be rescheduled in the fall. Back up to the all hazards plan, the all hazards plan. Needs to be updated annually. So we went through and made a lot of changes to the all hazards plan, which is a binder about an inch and a half, two inches thick. That has every single safety plan that we have within the district, such as the active shooter, bomb threats, weather, all those types of things. As well as some, so fairly detailed maps. And those were turned over to the county who keeps them online and also to our three township police departments. And we also this year completed a district-wide unification of the PBIS. Model that we have in all of our buildings, all of our principals and staff worked together to kind of unify the messaging. We had it in all our buildings, but some of the pillars were a little bit different. So we got together and unified that, that message and had new signage created for all the buildings. And that was all distributed. So our students K to 12 will have the exact same message from the time they begin in Potts Grove and kindergarten until they graduate. So that was a, a big initiative. I need to thank Dr. Ziegler who took over kind of the chairmanship of our district PBIS plan and helped a great deal with that. We also reorganized the webpage to make a cleaner, more user-friendly webpage for our parents. When they look for things such as bullying, information and all of the things that we do in PBIS to create positive citizenship. Next one, Laura. So we, we finally had our safety and security assessment completed or part of it completed. We had it done by a group, two gentlemen who used to work at the Office of Public Safety, but then two other gentlemen took over. They were rightfully so, not comfortable certifying somebody else's work. So they came and did a complete onsite visit themselves. That took place on January 20th. And I'd like to pull a few of the pieces out of their report. So one piece that, that they were incredibly impressed with, they said the entire onsite visit lasted approximately five and a half hours. I was most impressed with the overall cleanliness of all Potts Town, Potts Grove schools. So I want to make sure I, we, we got that in there because I know that our, our staff does a great job. Mr. Cardwell works very well with all of our, our facilities folks to keep our, our places up, up to, to speed. And as good as they could possibly be. And the guys that were there go through a lot of schools and they were quite impressed with what they saw in Potts Grove. And then the last piece was really some of their suggestions. The observations here can be fixed or reduced with additional organization and preventative maintenance at a minimal cost. And we're reviewing those now. We're going to be having meetings with our principals. Some of it is really just the way things are laid out. Sometimes it's the way the stairwells may have things in them that, that historically work there, but aren't a great place for those things to be. So Mr. Cardwell and I will be meeting with the principals to go through that because we have actual, some, some photographs that, that were taken that we can use to help create some plans. And the last piece of that assessment, they also do a, a mental health assessment, which talks about all of the things we have in place for our students. They were not able to complete that as of the arrival of COVID-19. So that will be addressed in the fall. So the complete assessment should be completed by the fall. And then our next page is just the plans we have coming up for next year. We will have those reunification tabletop drills in, in the fall. And Dr. Shirk and I are discussing ways to have a, a live drill sometime in the spring where we actually get some volunteers, some parents to let us take their kids to a location and then they come and pick them up so we can work through the plan in a real physical, real life situation. As I said, the county mental, student mental health assessment will be done. We will obviously continue with all of our drills and are diligent with that. I'm going to be walking the grounds with all of our first responders this year at some point in the fall. We have to do that every other year so that, that's something I want to make sure we get done next year. And just a constant self-assessment of what we do. And that's something I think we do well here. The, I think the committee does a lot of good work that, that people see things from different perspectives that we don't necessarily maybe notice. Either as administrators or teachers, we have outside folks that have, have access to our facilities and they often bring a nice perspective. So we add that perspective to ours and try to have a very well-rounded view of where we stand from a safety standpoint. So that concludes our, our annual safety report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Everybody hear me?
We, we're having trouble hearing you, Mr. Parker.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that, I'm in the mound.
And we lost you again, Mr. Parker, sorry. Mr. Lindgren, if, if, Mr. Parker could write that in the, the Q and A box. We could get that answer to him sometime throughout this meeting, if not tomorrow. Would, would that be okay?
Well, it would, but he's driving, so I'm not sure that he's on, he's, I think he's just on the phone. So I'm not sure that he's on the computer. I think he's just on the phone.
I do have a quick question. I, I don't want to take up Bill's time, but it does seem like he's probably out of range. Concerning the drills. Have you, have there been any reports of students having, you know, emotional? You know, issues surrounding them, you know, like they know it's a drill, they know it's fake. But anything coming from parents saying that the kids are scared the next day or, you know, anything like that?
I've heard, I've heard no reports from parents. I witnessed a situation with one special needs student that I, that I happen to know. And, you know, we worked with her and her teacher and we had the counselor available. But besides that one incident that I actually witnessed, I haven't heard from any parents or, or any reports.
Dr. Harney, this is Lisa Jones here. I could add to that, Mrs. Custer, that after the drills, I always talk with my PTA about them. And the response has always been that their students felt very comfortable. And it just really made it normal. The way we handled the intruder drills, it, we, the students felt like it was very much like a fire drill. So they were comfortable and confident.
All right, thank you so much. I, I do like hearing that because I just think the whole, whole idea of it is awful. The fact that we have to do them is just wrong, but I can't change that. But I, I am happy to hear that the students are handling it, handling it well. So thank you.
So I texted, I texted Mr. Parker. And asked him to text his question in to, and he's responding. So tell you what, we'll just wait just a moment for that, see if we can't get the texted question. Sorry for this delay. Okay, so his, one of his questions is, can we get a copy of the report? The presentation?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, that's one. He's texting more. By the way, I'll add my own aside while we're doing, thank you very much. I, I know that it's about, what did I count, maybe seven slides on that, on that presentation? That was tremendous. I under, I understand that it may be seven slides, but there's lots and lots of hours of work that went into that presentation. And I appreciate all of the work that that represents. Safety assessment came out in January, I lost already, kind of already, and I just can't remember. Okay. Yeah, so yeah, the question, I guess the main question was about the getting, getting the report, a copy of the report was his main question. So, and, and that's asked and answered. So if you wouldn't mind sending that to, I guess, Dr. Parker, Mr. Parker and the rest of the board, that'd be, that'd be great. And just, I'm just going to repeat myself again, as I often do. Thank you very much for that, for that, for that hard work, you and the committees and all the folks that worked on it. That is a tremendous amount of, of work and coordination. Because when you talk about getting all those first responders in, all the people involved, all the folks, all the, all the people in all the buildings. And Mr. Carwell and all the, just, when I just. Having been involved in things like that for other organizations and knowing all the people that have to get coordinated and all. Talking about all the things that you talked about and the binders that you talked about and the information that goes in the binders and the coordination for all that information that goes in the binders and all the stuff that has to go in there. And writing all the sentences and all the work and what it all means and how all that stuff fits together and putting it together and talking through all of those sentences. I know what that takes to get there. Much more, I understand that work much more than I understand the work that Dr. Pacito does. And I have a good feeling for how much that work takes. But your work, I understand much better on a, on the ground level. So thank you for all of that and all that work that you do. So much appreciated.
Thank you.
Very good. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on, on the safety report before we move on? If not, we can move on to section five.
Okay, moving on to approval of the minutes, 5.1. We're asking the board to approve the monthly board action for May 12, 2020 meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to combine 5.1, 5.2.
And I'll second that.
And this is why Mr. Davis slows our district so much. Okay, we have, we have a motion from Mr. Leach and a second from Mrs. Grimm to combine 5.1 and 5.2. The minutes from the past two meetings for May. Do we have any questions on 5.1 and 5.2? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection, thank you very much.
Moving on to the receiving of the accounts for audit.
I move that we accept the high school accounts, the middle school accounts and cafeteria accounts as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Scrim and a second from Mr. Leach that we receive the accounts for audit. All those, I'm sorry, does anybody have any questions on those? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Very good. All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection, thank you very much.
I move that we approve the payments of invoices in the amount of $5,458,747.15 for May 2020 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Scrim and a second from Mr. Leach that we pay the bills. Does anybody have any questions on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection, very good.
I move that we approve the treasury report for May 2020 as presented and file it for audit.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. And a, and a second from Mr. Leach that we've approved the treasury report and filed it for audit. Does anybody have any questions on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Very good, thank you. And all those opposed say no. So ordered without objection. Moving on to section nine.
Yes, I'd like to, you know, I don't know if Brianna's still with us, but I know Madison is with us to report out for the final time this year. And maybe even Madison, if you have a chance, I know you just signed up for the PCCY day on Friday for the team town hall entitled Race, let's talk about it. If you just let them know that you, you're going to do there, be there, thank you.
Sure, and thank you, Dr. Shirk. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the board and all the staff for the hard work and dedication they've put in all year, but especially from March 12th moving forward. Because I know that switch over was definitely nothing that was in the playbook for anybody. And that was definitely a very quick and it seems like easy transition almost from my point of view. Because it seems the teachers handle that quite well from my point of view. And I know the students also saw that the teacher, you're very supportive through all of that. And were there not only academically, but emotionally for all of us. And not only myself, but on behalf of all the other students. We are very greatly appreciative of that. I also did sign up for another town hall meeting for Montgomery County this Friday entitled Race, which is quite appropriate for right now. So I will be weighing in on that and hopefully asking Congresswoman Dean another question about her input and another perspective question for her instead of all what ifs. Since the what if questions aren't always necessarily able to be answered accurately. So once again, just thank you guys for everything and I can't wait to start off the 2020, 21 school year strong next year. Thank you guys.
Thanks, Madison, for your insight and input. I think it's, you know, quite appropriate. You know, I know we all appreciate your thoughts on the transition and your, you know, using the word playbook. Because that couldn't be further from the truth. But we quickly got it into our playbook and some of the adjectives you use regarding be supportive, supportive academically, supportive emotionally. As a superintendent, I really appreciate that insight as well. Thank you. Moving on to action items for personnel.
I'd like to make a motion to combine 10.1 through 10.8 unless anybody has an issue.
Second.
Second. Oh, that was a good one. We, we have a motion from Mr. Leach and a second from Dr. Nipper who came in, just, just beat you out a little bit there, Mr. Lappic, sorry. So any questions on 10.1 through 10.8? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Very good. Congratulations to those who got their appointments and got tenure. So very good. So ordered without objection.
Moving on to action items for business. The first one is 11.1 is the real estate levy. And we're asking the board to adopt the 2021 real estate levy as submitted.
I moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Mrs. Grimm and a second from Mr. Leach to adopt the real estate levy as presented, which is the same as last year, meaning no tax increases, is that correct? Mr. Nestor?
Sorry, I was muted, yes, that is correct.
Thank you very much. All right, does anybody have any questions on that? If not, all those in favor. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection.
Just real quick, quickly, if my, I may, I just wanted to thank, you know, all of our directors, you know, Mr. Nestor and his staff, as long as our board of directors, our building administrators and the board for support that helped us to allow us to work, to get ourselves a 0% tax increase. It was quite an effort by all of us, truly recognized as something that doesn't happen much in our, in our district, but it, in our, in our county, but has, has occurred in our district quite often in the last five years. So, complete from my seat, a complete complete team effort from the board, really down to our teaching staff and support staff. So, thank you all for working on that and the sacrifices that it might have made in some areas. But for the most part, the integrity of our programs and our staff are, will continue strong for another year.
I'd like to second that. It's, it is, it is a team effort. We, we all looked at it and talked about it together. It was decisions that we made together on this to make this work. And it wasn't, there was nothing. Like you said, we kept the program strong. We're, we're constantly mindful of keeping the academic classes strong. We're still keeping the athletic program strong. We're keeping the extracurriculars strong. We're, we're still looking at, you know, how we take care of our teaching staff. We're taking care of how we're doing the professional development. We're trying to keep everything intact so that we're creating a good environment for the entire district and still trying to keep good value and still trying to keep the best possible package we can for the taxpayers, the district, everything as well as we can do and still look towards what we've got coming at us. I think the person that gets the most heartburn with what we're doing, probably Mr. Nestor, to be honest with you. And not undeserved. I, I think he's the one that we're, we're really stressing the most. But thank you to, to my fellow board members and to you, Dr. Shirk, and to all of your administration. I think this has been probably one of the more difficult tasks we've had over the past several years. And I think it's a, a very good budget and, and well done. So, thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. Moving on to 11.2, the general fund balance. We're asking the board to approve the general fund budget for the 2021 school year in the amount of $68,704,579 as submitted.
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the general fund budget. Does anybody have any questions on this? If not, a motion to approve, I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All the one time I wait for everybody, because late, nobody is. So, all, all opposed say no. So ordered without objection. Thank you very much.
Moving on to 11.3, the
I'd like to make a motion that we combine 11.3 to 11.9.
Oh, second.
All right, very good. We have a motion and a second for 11.3 to 11.9. Does anybody have any questions about those? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no. All right, so ordered without objection. Mr. Davis, you're stuck with us for another year, sir.
Pleased to be back and thank you again.
Okay, moving on to 11.10 Charter School Reform Resolution. We're looking at an action item as well as discussion. I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Lindgren.
Okay, so back to Stacy Messing's question, and I do apologize for, for not having remembered this before when you asked about it. So, yeah, as, as Dr. Shirk said, this is the resolution. It was combined, the two, the two were combined into this one resolution, which was on the agenda. So, it was actually an agended item question. So, here it is. The combined resolution is there for you to read if you want to look on the board documents or on the board documents item. And it is a combination of the two. So, it's there to read if you wish. Would anybody care to ask any questions about this or make a motion on this charter reform resolution?
I'd like to make a motion that we do approve the charter school reform resolution.
Second.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second. Would anybody? Would anybody care to, does anybody have any questions on the, on this resolution? Hearing no questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no. Okay, motion approved with no objection.
Moving on to 11.11 Website Advertising Agreement. We're asking the board to authorize administration to enter into agreement for web advertising with Thought Process Enterprise as presented.
I'm moved.
Second.
Very good. Does anybody have any questions on the website advertising agreement? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection.
11.12 Budget Transfers. We're asking the board to approve transfers for May 2020 as presented.
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the budget transfers. Does anybody have any questions on the budget transfers? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection.
Moving on to 11.13 Amendment for Real Estate Tax Installment Payment Plan. Our recommendation to the board is to approve an amendment for Real Estate Tax Installment Plan for 2020.
I'm moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Very good. Do I have any questions on that? Hearing no questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection.
Am I waiting? I'm sorry, did you hear me?
I do now.
Too many Zoom meetings. 14.11, we're asking the board to approve an amendment to the Real Estate Tax Penalty Provision for 2020.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, 11.14 Amendment to Tax Penalty Resolution. And we have motion and a second on that. Does anybody have any questions on it? Hearing no questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Then all those opposed say no. So ordered without objection. Thank you.
11.15 The Addendum to the 2019-20 Transportation Contract. We're asking the board to approve the addendum to the 1920 transportation contract with CMD Services as presented.
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the addendum to the 1920 Transportation Contract, which is a credit of $25,000. Does anybody have any questions on that?
No questions.
We do have
Sorry, just a comment. Thank you to Mr. Nestor for his, you know, being on top of that, getting that for us.
Look at that. Praise for you, Mr. Nestor. We will always take that.
That's right.
So, very good. So noted and deserved. Well done. All right. Hearing one comment and no questions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection. Thank you.
Moving on to 11.16 Apple Lease. We're asking the board to authorize administration to enter into a hardware lease agreement for Apple, with Apple for four years with an annual payment of $96,250 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Apple lease for four years at $96,000 or so a year. Does anybody have any questions on this? Hearing no questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection.
11.17 Winter, Fall/Winter Athletic Bid. We're asking the board to award the 2021 Fall/Winter Athletic Bid as presented.
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Fall/Winter Athletic Bid in the amount of about $35,500. Does anybody have any questions on this bid? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to combine 12.1 to 12.2.
Second.
Look at that, you got it out there first. Now, congratulations. A motion to combine 12.1 and 12.2 on action items for conferences. And does anybody have any questions on those two? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection. Thank you very much.
Moving on to the Joint Operating Committee, the JOC. Mrs. Grimm, you'll provide us with an update from our July 1st meeting.
Yes, I was, it was a bittersweet. We had an exec session scheduled to discuss personnel. And then after that, the three school board members from Springfield had a conflict. So, long story short, we were, we did not have a quorum. So, we rescheduled it for this upcoming week. And, you know, that's the way it goes. So, the report, I'll have a, I'll double up on the report next time. How fast was that?
Very fast, Mrs. Grimm. Thank you.
That's the record.
It is.
Moving on to committee items. 14.1, the Operations and Facilities Committee Meeting Minutes from May 12. We're asking the board to accept the minutes of the Facilities and Operations Committee that was held May 12, 2020 as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, sorry, I was just Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Operations and Facilities Committee Meeting Minutes for May 12. Does anybody have any questions on those? They were great minutes. No questions? All right. All those in favor approving those minutes say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. So ordered without objection.
14.2, the Policy Committee. We're asking the Policy Committee to report out from the meeting that was held on May 26, 2020.
I missed Dr. Harney. If he'd report out, as obviously I can't be reading anything at the moment.
My pleasure. And these minutes might not be quite as good as the operations minutes, but I did my best. So, we started out, it was on May 26th, we began our meeting at 5:30. We started with policy 816.1, which is Use of Livestream Video on School District Property. That was policy that was brought to the committee at the prior meeting because we are needed to revise it to include our telepresence robots that we use for our homebound students. And in doing so, several questions were brought up, one being that at that point in the policy, it was prohibited to videotape lessons. And it was a bit contrary to some of the things we're doing now in the virtual environment. So, I was asked to go back and get some information on how to make this policy more, work better in our current environment and make sure that we are under current legal advisement. And I work with Dr. Ramage on this. And we did find the information that was presented in a Q and A from our legal team as to how we can operate in this world. And we did authorize that those videos can be taken of those lessons so they can be used in a future date and also by students that may not have been there at that time. Mr. Parker had wondered if recording those lessons, if the photo release that we do every year with all of our students applies, and it does apply to those videos. Mr. Lappic had a concern about potentially somebody recording the lesson, perhaps a student or a parent, and putting that out on the web. Again, with the frequently asked questions, we were able to see that the district would not be liable in that case. It would be something that would be a discipline issue for that student. And the district would not be liable. It would be like someone in a classroom taking video and posting it, again, with no liability to the district. So, Mr. Parker asked if we could add some language in there that said basically that if anybody wants to record those other than the teacher, they would have to get the host teacher's permission. And that policy then was moved to 30-day review. The next item was new business for the committee. We were looking to replace policy 705 Safety and Loss Control, which is the current policy, last looked at in 2004 with a policy 705, same number, called Facilities and Workplace. The administration was recommending this because it had been slightly changed to accommodate some of the new safety regulations that were put in place two years ago. And it also better outlined exactly what we're doing in our District Employee Safety Committee that is run by Mr. Nestor and Mr. Cardwell. And it mirrored our current practice. So, we wanted to make sure we had a policy that was both up to date and mirrored our current practices. That was agreed to, and that was moved to 30-day public review. And Mr. Parker, in looking forward, wanted to call to attention that we may be looking at the policy next year on how we pick student board representatives. I had mentioned that there were going to be some changes coming from mandates from Title IX, and we would have to look at several policies that reflect, would need to reflect those changes that are really fueled by Title IX. And Mr. Parker then offered the committee to be available over the summer in case any policies would need to be addressed in preparing for the new school year in our, as in case any policies would need to be addressed in preparing for the new school year in our, as of right now, unknown environment. So we concluded at 6:10, and that's our report.
Thank you, Dr. Harney. Moving on to our next report from the curriculum integration and technology committee.
Hi, everyone. So our final meeting was on May 26. And as usual, the last meeting of the year is basically a reflection and look back on accomplishments that happened throughout the year. So, um, the, we outlined multiple areas. And one was assessments. Dr. Ramage talked a little bit about ACRA and how the data is being used, was being used prior to the pandemic, to predict how the students would have performed on various assessments, which obviously those assessments never happened. So, um, but fingers crossed for next year. In professional learning, Mr. Voorhees shared how targeted professional learning occurred throughout the year. Some of the highlights were the MTSS framework, the elementary level, through which student growth, achievement and growth data is monitored so that the instruction can be planned responsibly. A trauma-informed education at all levels to assist the staff in meeting the needs of all students. The use of digital resources at all levels to enhance instruction. And a long-term professional development plan is being developed with input from over 50 teachers from across the district. There was a May 1 staff development day, and it gave teachers a chance to plan for the remainder of the school year, which obviously I'm sure they needed more than in the past, considering all the changes that remain. Gave them a chance to collaborate with teachers of other grade levels and just, you know, sort of get their heads together and put their heads together and make some plans. They were able to plan units and lessons for review for the 2020, 2020, the 2021 school year. And they were able to analyze prerequisite skills necessary for instruction in the subsequent grade levels and courses. In communication, which was Mr. Becker, he talked about the different vehicles we use to communicate with the parent-student stakeholders throughout the district. And some of the highlights were an increased focus and awareness of using the multiple means to communicate topics of importance with districts stakeholders. For leadership and supervision, we talked about various leadership groups across the district, and they were presented. Sorry, I'm trying to read this in the dark. Various leadership groups across the district were presented specific. It doesn't sound right. I'll skip that one. During the pandemic, the work shifted to allow to, development of communication tools and resources for the guidance of teachers. And the continuity of education plan that was in place from March 12 to June 10 was briefly discussed. And then Dr. Pacito shared how the district provides support and enhancement to things outside the classroom. And specific examples were Posco Village and Steam Expo. And we adjourned at 7:07, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Koster, for that report. Moving on to new business. Mr. Lindgren, would you like to start, or would you like to offer any board members to start? I do have one item to bring up for the board.
Um, we'll go with our usual, we'll start with our usual folks. We'll start with Mrs. Grimm. She's usually got a couple of things for us.
Um, yeah, you know, I don't have really any updates, but just, I just congratulate everybody for all their hard work and effort with the circumstances. And it just makes you proud to be a part of it. And thank you all for all the hard work you do for all of us.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Leach, you've usually got a couple of things to say?
Yeah, I, actually, I'm going to bring up and make a motion. There's an item that we've been sort of going over for a couple of meetings now. And being this is our last meeting, I just wanted to make sure we get it all approved and such like that. So I'm going to make a motion to approve Phase 1 of our signage program that we'll have done over the summer, using the Marcus Street funding to form for Phase 1 only.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, very good. We'll start with the board. Does anybody have any questions on the board on this particular item? Okay, since this was not on the agenda, I'm now going to open up this for public comment. Does anybody out in the public have any questions on this item? We've talked about this in previous board meetings, and this was in committee and came out of committee and was recommended to the board, I think, at the last, was mentioned previous to this. So we've talked about it. This was not a specific action item. I do see there's a question in the question. Signage, there is a question. Okay. Okay, I've got your question there on online learning. We'll get to that one. Thanks very much. This one, this question on online learning, we'll get to that when we get a little bit further on public comment after new business. This, this, this public comment is on specifically on this question about signage that we're talking about right now. Does anybody in the public have a question on signage? Don't send any in on that. So a closed public comment on signage. I don't have any questions from the board on signage. So, Mr. Davis, I think I'm good to go, to go ahead with the vote on this. Do you concur?
I'm agreeing, Bob.
Okay, thank you very much. All those in favor of approving the signage?
Does that vote count?
All those in favor of approving the signage signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed say no? Very good, so ordered without objection. Okay, do you have anything else, Mr. Leach?
No, just congratulations to all the seniors.
Very good, thank you. Speaking of seniors, Mr. Lepick. You have a graduating senior, I understand.
Yes.
This year, I asked you if you wouldn't mind to represent the board and to give the graduation speech.
Yes, and I did.
Tell me how that went, and to say anything you'd like to say on tonight, which is the graduation, as everybody's driving around, and most of the kids, I guess by now, at 8, well, 9 o'clock, it's almost all done. There's almost four left in the official drive-through graduation, pick-up-your-diploma thing.
Well, it, it wasn't really the way I expected, any of us expected our oldest to have graduation. So it was, it was a unique experience. Let's look at it that way. But it was very enjoyable. I mean, the way that everyone did the virtual graduation ceremony, it was, it was fantastic. It was beautiful. They made us each feel special. There was clapping, there was cheering. It was, it was a positive event. It was great. I mean, and it was really sort of nice because we were home 20 minutes later. So there was that positive part too. But it, it was really wonderful having the virtual graduation. I just think that everyone did an excellent job, and administration, the staff, the teachers, Dr. Ziegler, Mr. Dany, it was, I can't express enough. I know my wife wrote a long-winded letter that she sent off to Dr. Ziegler as well to pass along to teachers and staff. It was, it was in always a positive event, so very pleased and very happy about it.
Very nice. I know in the, in the meeting, the committee meeting that we had immediately before this, it was chaired by Ms. McIntyre, that Sean's book was talking about the filming of the graduation ceremony is completed and that it's going to run, I think, tomorrow night. And we'll all have a chance to see the completely edited and spliced graduation ceremony tomorrow, including your speech. So I think everybody will be watching that tomorrow. So that'll, that's something for all us to look forward to. So that'll be nice. Did you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I'm just, just thankful for all the help that everyone put towards it in the district to, to overcome everything that happened to still make it special. So it was greatly appreciated, and I know not just by my family, but everyone I've spoken to, even those without graduating seniors, thought it was so well done, and so very happy about it.
Thank you for representing the board and for making the speech. And congratulations to you and your family on your son's graduation. And I would like to echo your sentiments that I think the administration, and we, I know we keep saying this, and I don't want to, I don't want to, I guess I don't mind, repeating over and over again, what a great job, I think, that our staff and administration have done in making this, this unusual year as great as it can be for so many of our students, and making it something special, memorable. It could be memorable in bad ways, but I think they've made it memorable in a lot of good ways for so many of our students. And I think that's a remarkable achievement, given what, what they had to deal with. So, thank you.
I actually, as I say, I would like to add, you just reminded me, part of the events, part of it, the whole celebration, was also the car parade. And we had the fire and the police officers there, and they, they really helped to make it special as well. I mean, the fire department, the police departments, they did, they really helped. It was really nice to see them be their part of the community and sending off the seniors in such a way, so.
It's, it's a good reminder as we go through these days of the things that we're living through, and we are watching the news and all the things that are happening in the news, that we, we are in a, we are part of a community, and we have blessings to think of, the community that we're a part of. And we look around, and there are plenty of things to be grateful for here in the Posco Grove community and the community that we're a part of. And for us to, as Dr. Shirk said, for us to reflect on and to think of, and how do we strengthen it even more? And how do we make everybody feel welcome and part of this community? And how do we strengthen it further from where we are? And how do we make everybody feel like they're a part of this? And how do we make it even better from where it is today? How do we go forward from here? And it's already strong. Let's make it even better every day. So thank you for being part of it. Thanks for thinking of all these folks. We've got a great, we've got a great Posco Grove community. And it can be better every day, and all these people that are here are part of it. And let's go forward and make it better tomorrow. So, thank you for that, Mr. Lepick. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else on the board that would like to add anything just now? Okay. I guess I would like to say that one of the things that we blipped over in our high-speed portion of the, of the board meeting of the action items, one of the truly unsung groups that we don't really talk about a lot, we mentioned them. We know one doctor, or Mr. Cardwell's group, the custodians, the maintenance crew. We were able to conclude an agreement with them to extend their contract for another year. And Teamsters Local 384. So we've concluded an agreement with them to extend their contract for another year. And just wanted to mention that. We approved that tonight as part of our business. So we wanted to take a moment to express our gratitude, so much of not only what we've done, but they've been a big part of making this school year successful and keeping the buildings clean and spotless, the deep cleaning that we're having to do, and all the special preparations and all the hard work that we're, that we've had to do, and that certainly it will be having to do going forward and getting ready for next year. And whatever we're going to have to do over the summer and into next year, they're certainly going to be part of it. And now we've got an extension on that contract, and we're very grateful to have them on board. So again, part of our community, and we've got that agreement, and we're very grateful for it. So, a special thanks, and happy to have that agreement concluded. So, I'd like to make that announcement, you know, have that pointed out for everyone. Dr. Shirk, did you have anything to add?
I do, Mr. Lindgren, thank you. I just wanted to take this opportunity, over the last several months, you know, as we have worked through the continuity of education program and working with the virtual platforms that we've had, one of the things that has come really to the forefront is that, you know, is that a true, a true learning management system is needed in the K5 level. And I had an opportunity to go around to faculty meeting Zooms over the last two weeks. And, and especially at the K5 division, that was something that we felt, the teachers felt, was a, was a need that we'd have to bolster going into the fall. With that process, we asked, you know, our CIT team to really have those discussions amongst each other, as well as look to School G Company to, to see what it would cost us to, to move that platform down to the K5. We already have it in the 612 area. And it's important, as we plan for the future, that we have the capability of all of our students and families to understand the virtual world as if, if it's a need. And I think that that landscape has changed. It's changed forever. I think the virtual world will be part of what we do in education, you know, moving forward. And I'm going to ask the board really tonight for some special consideration because we, we did not have this on our radar. School G came back to us late last night with a price for an extra 1,500 students, which would approximately double our cost of, of School G. The current cost is $8,750. And it would push our 2021 price up to $17,100 for the increase of the 1,500 students in the K5 division, as well as two sessions of web-based PD. One of the things that I, we don't have to spend a lot, any more money really in that PD, I feel, at this point, because we are, we have teacher leaders, we have our director of integration, a lot of, you know, expertise in this field amongst our staff that can help us move this platform, platform forward. So I look at this as a tool for the toolbox. I look at for something that came out of the pandemic and COVID piece for us as a need. It's something that I think I talked to the board more individually about it at times as we spoke over the last couple of months. But I'm just asking the board to consider this tonight because we really need the summer time to create in-service blocks for our K5 division so that we can in-service them on key items of School G so that we can, you know, have that more of an interactive piece and also give us the opportunity to, to in-service the parents as well and set that process up in the fall. So I appreciate, you know, your consideration tonight. As you know, I don't probably, I'm not going to say never, but I very rarely ever in the last four years ever bring something like this, but to the forefront in such quick notice. But I did have the opportunity to share some information with you this afternoon on, on the why pieces of what we're doing and the cost moving forward. So I'd like to open it up at this time for any discussion with the board. And I also, we can ask Mr. Voorhees, Dr. Ramie. with the board. And I also, we can ask Mr. Vorus, Dr. Ramage, as well as Tony Bickert, or any other of the building principals who have gone through this process, if the board has any questions at the 612 level or K, K5.
Shirk? Could I add something real quick that I think is important for the board to know? In the, as part of the budget, there will be some extent, expansion of the school safety and security program with federal funds focused on COVID-19 issues. And one of the things that is acceptable is enhancing online learning, which I feel that this, this contract will, will meet the definition of. So for, for this coming year, the increase will be covered with that grant.
Thank you, Dave.
Yeah. Question. What exactly does this addition do differently? What will you, the teachers have that they don't have now with the virtual instruction with this program?
Dr. Shirk, would you like, yeah, would you like me to hop in on that a little bit?
Yeah, I appreciate that.
There are lots of, there are lots of tools that help extend, sort of extend the walls of the classroom, you know, beyond the classroom itself into the home. Many of the tools that are most commonly used in the K5 environment start out, they're free tools, and they are, they do include some provision to help with the academic side, but they're, they're primarily more of a communication piece. So Classroom Dojo, Seesaw, some of these things that are very popular, they're not really an LMS, meaning a learning management system that allows us to take our existing curriculum resources, features built in, tools like Google Docs and things that are being used in the classroom. They can all be sort of centralized. It gives parents one place to go. It can still include parent, it, it can include from the teacher's side, parent communication, but it allows, for example, through Tony and the technology department, it would allow us to roster students. So when they're assigned to a teacher, whether it's a course at our secondary school, or whether it's a primarily that main homeroom teacher, that main core teacher, K5, it allows the system to roster students so that that, some of those pieces are just much more fluid and, and allow for the passing of both academic work and the communication piece. It has calendars. It has lots of ways that we can update and just keep parents in the loop. We also like, it's not exactly at the heart of your question, but because there are other learning management systems, we feel now is a good time to jump ship to a new platform and try to train staff who's pretty well-versed and it's working six through 12. And similarly, once a K5 parent is onboard, they're not going to see a shift when it comes to middle school and high school. So it's a platform that can be age-appropriate. It can look different for a K2 classroom, but it's the same platform that can be extended all the way up through, through 12th grade.
Do any of the principal, elementary principals have anything to add?
This is Dr. Jones. We'd certainly felt during this time that we've been producing online learning, we definitely need a learning management system at the, at the K5 level. We have been using Class Dojo, and that's something that our parents were used to, but that's really a communication tool. It is my understanding that they've made some updates to improve it and enhance its capabilities, but I don't know exactly what those are yet because that just occurred. So we definitely need something where teachers, that they can use. Because, for example, what they're doing now is they're creating lessons, they're videotaping lessons off their computer. Sometimes they have to upload them to YouTube or Loom or another platform and then load them from there onto Classroom Dojo in order to get them out. And some of the feedback from parents has been that those lessons that were pre-recorded on video, produced and then shared, weren't always viewable because of technological glitches. So having a learning management system that would allow them to deliver the content as well as manage it with, as lessons come in or turned in managing the assignments, that would be ideal.
Any other questions?
Not a question, Dr. Shirk, but just a comment. If I understand correctly, the new website that we approved, just read, just a couple, I guess, little pieces ago, that's going to go into effect July, actually incorporates, if I'm, if I understand correctly, all of Schoolology and everything. So this is going to give our parents much more cohesiveness straight through, not only with Schoolology, but also with the new website improvements that we have rolling out.
Correct. And if any of the directors would like to comment on that, I mean, generally speaking, you are correct. I don't know if anybody wants to weigh in specifically, but that, that is, that is going to be one of those enhancements that should, should help us out in our families.
If I understand correctly, this should make things easier for, for the entire progression from kindergarten through 12th, because from the parent's standpoint and the student's standpoint, they'll be using the same system.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Would anybody on the board be willing to make a motion to extend our School G contract down to K5, with the understanding of this year that the safety grant would cover it, will continue to monitor our growth and the needs assessment of our program moving into the following school year?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion. A second from Mrs. Black.
I think you were so mature.
Oh, my gosh.
We have a motion from Mr. Leach. A second from Mrs. Custer. So at this time, I, I think we've gotten all the questions from the board. At this time, I need to open it up for public comment to the public. And I think that's, at this time, we'll open up for public comment to the public. Does anybody in the public, anybody at all have any questions on this piece? And this is regarding School G and adding that piece for K to five. Anything about the software or anything about the contract for the 8,500? There you go. I thought that might, I thought that might address your question there. I do appreciate that. We, that might address your question that you had. Very good. I know other additional questions. Same as before, Mr. Davis, I think we're, we're good. And I think we can close public comment and move on to our vote. Do you concur, sir?
I do concur, Robert.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. So ordered without objection. You're, you're on your way there, Dr. Shirk.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody again for, for the flexibility and adding this tool to our, our toolbox. I know our directors, and I know, you heard, you heard from Dr. Jones, I know Terry was trying to work on getting your audio fixed, but they all, Terry just said thank you on the chat. So much-needed tool. Appreciate the input. And we'll continue to keep you posted on our progress as we, we in-service our staff on School G. Thank you again.
All right. So I think that might bring us to the end of new business unless anybody else has anything else they would like to add. That being the case, now that brings us to public comment. Again, the actual regular freestyle, open, open for anything, public comment. So Ms. Ruiz Brown, if your question hasn't been addressed, I mean, I think we kind of touched on what you wanted to know from your question from earlier in regards to online learning and what was going to be the students for the option, and what we were going to do for the platform for online learning. I think we kind of just covered it with that last item. If I'm wrong, let me know. And we can have Dr. Shirk go into that, but I think we just kind of covered what your question was and answered it. Maybe I should ask this a different way. Dr. Shirk, you've seen the question that was waiting for public comment on the Q and A board for a while. What has been discussed for next year in regards to online learning? If we're doing online learning again next year, will students have the option to, have the option to do online learning? And will there be discussion in what platform will be used for online learning? Did I interpret that correctly, that, that School G will be the online learning platform and so on? Is that the right answer? Or have I misinterpreted the whole thing completely?
No, Mr. Ling, you, you have interpreted that correctly. The School G will be the platform. And we are in a process of, of, you know, finishing up our parent surveys, but we do feel that, you know, some of the options that we're discussing, that we have discussed thus far with our administrative team has been, you know, depending on the recommendations from the CDC and the Health Department, being back in under green, which would be a normal situation, a hybrid or a part-time type of schedule with, you know, with some, a virtual component. And then, of course, finally, the, a complete online, you know, education process that we finished a year, like, like we finished a year except with a better platform. So we are just in the process of continually to collect data. We're waiting for direction from the state and local officials. At this time, we're not in any position to really make any definites. Like you said, we're wrapping up our parent survey. We're surveying our teachers. And we're going to continue to monitor the progress. We're going to remain virtual in our Summer Success Program and ESY as, as we stay in yellow for a few more weeks. So we'll continue to keep the community updated along the way so that we can make the best decisions for our families in the Pots Grove School District.
Very good. Very good. All right. I really don't have anything to add to that. I think we're in good shape, and I think we've pretty much wrapped up for this. The question is, will School G be available for ESY? For, for this year? And I, I think the question is that we're, we're going to be looking at that. I think we're going to try to have that in place for, for July the first, and we won't have it in place for K to five this year. But please correct me if I'm wrong. I think it will be for, for the fall.
Yeah, I can, I can, we can get back to Ms. Brown on that. I, I don't know. I mean, we, we don't, we don't get, we don't get it. There is obviously the process. First of all, it gets approved from July 1, and then we have to, you know, have an installation period and a professional development period for our teachers. So I guess if I, if I had to ask, if I had to say that tonight, it's probably no. But if, if, as, as I have a meeting with our, our leadership team on Thursday, so if, if there's more answers specifically to this, we'll get them out as soon as possible.
All right. So I'll just give everybody one last opportunity on the board to chime in before we wrap it up. It's almost 9:30. So.
I'm sorry. I was out most of new business. Are we still in new business, Bob?
Actually, no. We're, we've moved into public comment.
Oh, sorry. I'll shut up.
Okay. We moved into public comment. And we're, we're just about to move to adjournment, to be quite honest. And thank you for your, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one thing. You were talking several bittersweet things. And for us, this Monday was the last Monday for food, for lunch distribution. And for my wife and I, this was a sample of the way this community and the school district comes together to help people and to build a sense of community that's very important and is kind of unique to the Pots Groves. So I just want to say a big thank you to Dave Nestor and all of his people who participated in the working and some of the school directors and some of the other people who were regulars who showed up at these things. My wife and I were kind of late to that party. But I think that was a, that was for us a very instructional experience.
Yeah. It's a good crew we have here. I'm, I'm, I'm very happy to be part of it and very proud to be part of it. And it's a good, good outfit.
Yeah.
With that, I think we're, we're at item 17.1. I would, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, I think.
I'm moved.
Adjourn. We have
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, I'm not going to listen to you. So, everybody, take care.
Yes.
Enjoy.
Thank you, Zora.
Enjoy.
Bye now.
Good night, everyone. Have a good night.